Hi, my name is Catherine Gallerani. I'm the reporter for the Carver Reporter with the local Carver. And we're here on Area 58 Community Access Media for a candidates forum. And we are starting off with the three candidates for school committee. They are Kelly Neme, Kathleen Sullivan, and Jackie Lake.
Hello.
And we first will open with two minutes opening statements.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Kelly Neme, and I am running for the Carver School Committee. As part of the first graduating class of Carver High School in 1989, I believe that the education I received in our school district is the bedrock of all of my successes. By way of brief introduction, I am an information technology specialist with a career spanning over 30 years in a variety of different venues, such as public service, energy, law. I've worked in a variety of positions in technology and insurance. Right now, I am currently the interim school committee member, appointed in October, and the mother of a very sassy second grader who attends Carver Elementary School. The reason I'm running for school committee is very simple. I care about education and I care about this community. I've been a part of this community for 43 years. I will never, and I feel there's never been a better time at this point to give back to my community than right now. In October, when I, a community member, a committee member, excuse me, sat down, I felt compelled to fill that void. I was appointed to the position by a joint committee of the school committee and the select board, and I've worked hard and learned a great deal during my time as interim school committee member. As a lifelong learner, I am committed to giving back to my community and committed to continuing this path of service for Carver students and their families. With the issues facing Carver Public Schools, I feel my experience and skills will continue to be an asset to the school committee. I believe a fresh set of eyes and a unique perspective can help build a rapport among our school committee members that I feel has been lacking over the last few years. COVID has definitely driven people apart and become a little bit divisive, so I stepped up for that reason. I wanted to build a rapport with the teachers, with the school committee members, with the community, and help bring us all back together and be the Carver that I know it to be and what I grew up with. One of the most important factors in our students' learning experience is their relationship with their teachers. The classroom is their second home. When we invest in our teachers by supporting them with resources, respect, and confidence, we're doing everything that we can to give our children a chance for a better future. Teachers, families, and children all working together is the pathway to quality schools and the cornerstone of our community's present and future. If elected, I will work closely with school administration, town officials, and most importantly, with families, teachers, and students to help our schools meet the academic, physical, and social development of all of Carver students. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next, Kathleen.
Hi, I'm Katie Sullivan.
Katie Sullivan.
Yeah, short for Kathleen. I have lived in Carver most of my life. I did move away for a while after high school, and I was very lucky to have this wonderful community to come back to. I am a paraprofessional right now in a collaborative program for kids that don't fit the mold of a traditional school system. We serve students across the South Shore, so it's a very fulfilling yet challenging position. I am also a junior at Bridgewater State University studying special ed K through eight, working towards my licensure, because education has always been important to me. And Carver is very important and dear to my heart. It's been so wonderful when I did, when I was ready to come home, that everyone was here for me. In the past few years, because of the pandemic, like Kelly said, it's been a little divisive in town, and I miss that community that we grew up with here in town. And it was very easy for me to sit back and criticize and complain about decisions being made for the town. But I realized that that's not going to change anything, and what I know about is education and the way I can help our town and to bring us to where we should be and where our students should be. Then I should become active and put my money where my mouth is. So here I am, running for school committee.
Thank you, Katie. And now Jackie, you're next.
So my name is Jackie Lake, and I've been in this town for about two years. We've been looking, and we were fortunate to buy a place in Calton and Carver where we've been looking for a long time to live here. I do love this town very much. I've been working in the field of education for about 20 years. I have advocacy, policy, review, policymaking experience. I have the whole span of education from kindergarten till high school experience, usually in special education. So I really wanted to give back with the knowledge that I've obtained. I've heard and seen that it's been a little hard in, with the committee recently. A lot of tension, and I have a passion for getting people to just come together and de-escalate, de-escalation techniques and community building is just something, a passion that I have, bringing people together. I've been a leader in various groups volunteering throughout my whole entire life. Fundraising is huge. I understand the concept of parent involvement and what a huge part that plays in a district. I also understand that the school committee is the heart, well, one of the hearts, like one of the main parts of how a district can grow and it can succeed. You know, if you have the wrong parts, it can be detrimental to an actual whole district. So I want to see Carver do well. It has in the past. They have some awesome programs that I've seen. My daughter's in kindergarten, and I want to see her grow up in a school district that is flourishing. So that is why I am running.
Kelly, back to you. What is changing in public education and how are you prepared to deal with that?
One of the biggest things that's changing in public education is unfortunately, our educators are leaving in droves. They're either leaving education or they're leaving our district. That is another reason why I'm running. I feel that we need to be doing more to attract and retain our talent. Locally would be preferable, since local people know our community the best and know our students the best. I think that is a big change that's going to be happening. I know in particular in Carver, there is a whole subset of teachers that are ready to, they're getting closer to being eligible for retirement. And I feel that if we don't start acting now, we're going to have a problem when that happens, where we'll be struggling to find educators to come into our district. One of the other things I think is changing as well, and again, this kind of has to do with COVID. I'd like to start seeing some of the programs that we had before COVID and some of the processes, the procedures, the interactions, the events. All of that stuff start to come back now that we're moving away from the pandemic. Definitely would like to see some more middle school sports, intramurals, things that have kind of been taken away from our children over the past couple of years due to the pandemic, and bring those back into focus. And another thing that's a big concern and is changing all the time is just budgeting. Carver's a small town. We don't have a ton of revenue streams coming into our town. As Jackie mentioned, fundraising is important, absolutely. But we need to be working with our select board and with the community members to find creative ways to bring more money into our district. We're struggling with that. I definitely think we're struggling with that. And, you know, historically, Carver is not a high-paying district. And unfortunately, I think going forward, because we do have educators that are leaving, we do want to entice educators to stay with us and to also come to our district. And we're going to need to find some more money to do that, I think.
Katie, how do you see this?
I agree with Kelly's statement about retaining the talent of teachers. Especially since COVID, it's a very difficult field to work in and to feel appreciated as an educator. Children cannot be successful without strong teachers. Also, coming from a special ed point of view, I think education is changing in the way children learn. With all screen time and all of that, it affects how their brains are developing and how they're learning. And I think it's very important to have safety nets in place for those children, like the ones that I work with, that may fall through the cracks and not get the services they need. So I think, I agree with Kelly that having a strong teaching staff is incredibly important and having a strong support system for kids that might not otherwise get caught with their learning disability because they're well behaved or something. I think that is extremely important to address.
And changes in public education, what are your concerns in that area?
I would be definitely in line with special education and making sure that it's a supportive environment for the teachers, as well as the children and the parents. I would also consider the financial state of the district, finding more grants, obviously having communication with other parts of the town as well. But there's money out there to be, to be had and being able to find it, doing the research that's needed for that. So, and so that the right teachers, the right support systems can be in place. I totally agree that COVID hit us pretty strong, as every district has been hit. And the social aspect needs to be brought back. Maybe not the same way as it was before, but there needs to be that social piece brought back to the district. And funding needs to be found for that, because our kids, a lot of them, their learning has suffered because of the mask-wearing or just not being able to be around kids, because they've been isolated for so long. And it's going to take some time, and we need to be aware of that. And, you know, mentally, mental health is huge, and that's a part of that special ed piece, I think. So I want to make sure that that whole special ed in this district is supported.
And as a school committee member, how do you reach out to teachers and kind of form that unity of therapy?
You would, I just, you have to be open to receive what they hear. Obviously, reach out first. Ask what they need, what, what are they lacking? How can, how can I support you as a school committee member? What programs do you want to see in the school that I can vote for for you? Or what is something that's going to, you feel is going to harm you? Have open dialogue with the, the teaching staff, I think, is the, the best way to figure out how to solve that issue together. Because you can't do it, you have to do it as a team.
You mentioned different techniques. Is that, how would that fit in with the?
Different techniques of, what, of community building?
Yes.
So you can, just getting in, getting involved in the different things that are happening within the district, with PTO, building those relationships, serving, giving yourself to be able to get back, kind of, you know, build those types of things. And just putting yourself out there, making sure that everybody knows that you're available and that you're here to serve and that you're open to, you know, all different types of comments and concerns, and you want to be there to help. And hopefully come up with some sort of plan that can, can make everybody happy or the majority happy, you know? We want to listen to everything that comes our way. And I usually do it just by getting involved, you know, and building relationships.
Kelly, what are, what things do you want to do in your new, second term, right?
In a second term, there's a few things. As I mentioned, the retaining and attracting of new teachers and new talent to our district. And that doesn't just include teachers. That includes staff and coaches, athletics, drama, everything, arts, music. So that's, I'd like to see that. What I'd like to see going forward, a little bit more equity. A little bit more equity, inclusion. I'd like to focus on a cradle-to-career kind of path, where we're supporting these children from the very early stages of school all the way through till they graduate and decide on a career. And I think in a lot of ways, Carver's already started to do that, especially with the Pathways Program. It's excellent. And I've been learning over the past few months about all the curriculum that we actually teach. So every school committee meeting, we have a new staff and, or staff person or a head of a department come in and do a presentation. I've been interacting with some of those teachers and, because I do IT and they are looking for internships right now. I've been interacting with a couple of teachers that are looking for, looking for internships for their high school students for some of the Pathways Programs, particularly engineering and information technology, putting them together with companies that I've worked with in the, in the past, and hopefully getting that, getting that all sorted out for the summer for the high school kids, especially that are, are going to be graduating or looking to graduate in a particular field later on. So I think that we are already taking steps to do some of those things for improvements. But I think we can do more. I definitely think we can do more. I think we can have a relationship with the community where we're bringing in local businesses to help with some of those internships, to do mentorship programs with our students in some of these Pathway Programs. And as Jackie mentioned, just getting involved in everything that we possibly can. I'm a member of the Diversity Committee currently, and I think they're doing great work on bringing equity into teaching. And also, the teachers themselves are looking at how to bring equity in and teach to everybody, as well as, you know, the individual, normal, average, everyday student. We're trying to talk about inclusivity and just, you know, making improvements in all of our programs and all of the different areas that we can to make this journey through our Carver School District more rewarding and more beneficial to all of the students.
And do both of you agree with the career pathways direction?
I love that. I definitely love it. I've done things like that in the past, and it's just beneficial to everybody. I mean, it benefits the town as well when they're able to get involved and they see these kids grow up and learn these skills that they can take on. And it just shows just camaraderie between just the whole town in general, too. It's really neat.
I don't know how familiar you are with the Pathways Programs, any of this. Do you see any other possibilities that would interest you, Katie, maybe?
I think, and I think a VOGE program in Carver would be amazing. I know that's a little bit of a pipe dream, or a big pipe dream. But I don't think that every child is made for college necessarily. But that doesn't mean that we can't give them tools to a success in other areas. And I, I think that if we could relieve some of the pressure from those kids that aren't that cookie cutter mold and help them find their, their path, whether it's mechanics or, there's lots of ways for them to be successful if we could help them, especially in this right to choose your school. We want them to stay in Carver, so we want to give them every opportunity, whether they're college-bound or military-bound or right off into the workforce. So I think it's really important to give them those tools, whatever their path may be. And I think it's very important that we do it from the time they're young until they graduate.
I wanted to ask about budget. Is there, what are the principal concerns regarding the budget for you?
So retention of teachers would be first and foremost. But I always, safety is always a concern for me, and that's one of my top priorities, making sure that the district has a good safety plan, kids are safe in the schools, that they're not going to be able to get sick for just things that are happening within the school. So then also like IT type of things as well, multimedia. We're using that a lot these, more these days, and we just have to make sure that we're up with the times and, because they're going to be using it when they get older and they're, they know it a lot more than us, you know, sometimes. So just keeping up with that. And then health and wellness as well is huge. Making sure that they learn, have a foundation of wellness.
And Kelly, what are your top budget priorities?
Right now, currently, is definitely retaining teachers. I think that is probably the nearest crisis that we may face very soon. There's, there's always talk about budgets. And in Carver, our schools are our biggest budget item. They always are. And so when they talk about spending and cutting spending, they always talk about the schools first. From what I've seen, I don't see a lot of frivolous spending at all. I think that there needs to, like I mentioned, creative ways to bring revenue streams into the town to make it easier so that we don't always have to fundraise for things. It's just, I mean, things are difficult all the way around right now for a lot of people. And it's difficult for the school. I think this year, we're in a better position to do a lot more for the, for the teachers and the school. There's some, some big projects that we're looking to do that have already been approved by the school committee, which I think is fantastic. But we can always do more. We can absolutely always do more. And I, and like I said, they always go to the schools first, because it is our biggest ticket item. I would like to see us do something more for our teachers, whether it be resources that we can, you know, give them or, you know, put in the budget for them to help them teach, follow the curriculum. And even the extras would be nice. Honestly, though, it's going to be, it's going to be an uphill battle, I think. I think it's going to be an uphill battle with the, with the budgeting. And again, just that, I think, is the biggest crisis that's facing us right now is just retaining and keeping our teachers.
You have different ideas?
They're very similar to Kelly's. And again, I'm coming from an education point of view, and Carver's teachers need some more support, I think, than they're getting from, and I understand we don't have a large revenue in this town, and that is a struggle. But we trust our children to these people for the majority of their awake hours. We want them to feel supported. It's, I, I just think it's incredibly important. I do know that teachers spend their own salaries on supplies for the kids. It would be wonderful if we could alleviate some of that for them.
Are there any other kinds of programs you think the school committee might consider?
Consider for?
Just to broaden the wealth of education.
Well, I do know that they are talking about expanding the Pathways Program, which I think is excellent. I myself have made some suggestions in terms of the IT, because that really is my background, is IT. So, you know, when they talk about the IT and the budget, I was like, oh, yeah, yeah. I understand what you need, what you need that for. So they, I, I do think expanding the Pathways Program so that we can catch those kids that are, again, like Katie said, not necessarily in a traditional school path, absolutely. Like I mentioned in particular to one, during one of the meetings, instructional design. If you're already working on, you know, building, you know, doing programming and coding and all kinds of, you know, support for IT, you should add in adult, education, e-learning, instructional design. Because if we're using these things in the classroom, kids should know how to build them and how to do that stuff. I think that's an excellent idea to add to it. The math program. Honestly, what I would like to see, and this is really funny, and I think a lot of parents will agree with me, during the COVID time, when they were doing hybrid school, math kind of fell to the wayside for a lot of people. And in particular, my daughter struggled with it this year, mostly because my husband and I taught her the wrong way. They learn a different way now. So I would love, and one of the things I've most enjoyed about being on the school committee is the presentations that the department heads have been giving about what they're teaching in class, being able to interact with them and see that. I would love for them to do a program for the parents if they could. I mean, I know honestly that it would be hard to do it, but just having the overview of the new math curriculum for the elementary school was eye-opening for me. I was like, okay, now I know why my poor daughter is behind, because I'm the one, because I know the old way. Again, I'm, you know, as my daughter likes to say, I'm old. So I know the old way. And so we taught her the old way, like we taught her subtraction. But of course, she got back to school, and that's not the way that they do it anymore. So I would love to see a program for the parents, honestly, just to explain. And I highly recommend to anyone who has questions about our curriculum to come to our school committee meetings, because they are giving fantastic overviews for that on all the curriculum and programs.
Jackie, do you have any ideas about programs?
One thing I wanted to implement, other than the fact that we do have the, those, I was there when Bridges was being looked at, and I just find Bridges Math was just wonderful. I just thought that whole presentation was wonderful. And I, and I would also encourage people to go to those school committee meetings when those are being presented. I wanted to present maybe even a parent involvement type of task force where if they want to review curriculum, books, or anything, they have the ability to do that in some sort of a forum where they can make comments and submit comments. And just giving the parents some more control, I would say, in, in letting them feel like they have more control in that. I, I find it important that the, the parents understand what's being taught and can, can make comments on that, so.
Katie, program-wise?
Well, I love Kelly's idea of teaching parents the new math, because I will say that math was never my favorite subject. And then after being in a second grade classroom and learning their math with them as I was helping them, I may have had a whole different career path, because math is fun to me now. So I, and part of it is that it's very tactile learning now, because they have their manipulatives and all of that. So I would just love to see programs implemented that allowed different types of learning, whether it's learning through art and strengthening those extracurricular type. Because children's brains build pathways of learning when they're doing those things, as well as when they're doing rote things like reading or math. So I think it would be to So I think it would be to reinforce and, and make sure that they have those arts as well as the STEM. Those are really important.
What do you think about the transition from elementary to middle high school? Do you feel that it's a strong area for the schools?
Um, I think that's a very scary time for a kid, and, um, I think, I think you could always do more. I, I, I do, especially when it comes to that age group, um, and to that transition, I don't think you can do enough to make it easy for them. I think there's so much anxiety in kids at that age. They're going from being big fish to, to a bit, to a bigger pond. Um, so I do, I think that we could always do more. I would rather err on giving them more, um, and to help them with that transition than to have some of these kids at that age fall by the wayside.
How about you? What do you think, Kelly?
Um, I'm, I'm going to go agree with Katie on that. We can always do more. It's definitely a very anxious and awkward age, and that transition is not easy at all. One of the ideas that I had, um, because I do find that at that age, there's sometimes they're a little resistant to listening to adults. A mentorship program, um, where it's peers, not necessarily peers their own age, but maybe a year or two older, where they help them with that transition, where they have like a buddy system, um, where they're assigned a student, you know, that they can go to with questions, or, um, if they need something, or if something's bothering them, they have a student or a peer that they can talk to, they can go to as a resource. Um, that also has a connection with the administration and the teachers and everything, and all of the other folks that would be there to help. Um, because I definitely find, especially with my nephews and nieces that are middle schoolers, um, that they don't always want to listen to the parent. They don't always want to listen to the teacher. They don't always want to listen to the administration. So if we had some sort of peer-to-peer mentorship program, I think that would be a great thing in the middle school, absolutely. And I believe that we did have one at one point, but I'm not sure where we are with that now only for the fact that I think COVID has kind of curtailed some of those things, um, over the past couple of years.
Jackie, what do you think?
So I've seen a bunch of different programs, um, through my career, um, and I don't necessarily know what we're doing right now. Um, and again, like you were saying, COVID has probably changed it. Um, but I've seen the Buddy Program, and I think that's fantastic. Um, kids in the higher grades coming in and being, um, one-on-one. But I've also seen the littler kids going to the, um, the grade for like a field trip for a day or so, and kind of feeling more comfortable getting those tours and, um, meeting the teachers, meeting the kids, and having socials and all those types of things, just to kind of make them feel a little bit more at home in that environment. So I would probably look to those types of things.
I did a, uh, story about Benzie, the dog. Have you all met him, and what do you think about the program?
I have met Benzie, and actually, my daughter came home today to tell me that she got to have Freeze Pops because it was Benzie's birthday. Benzie's brother actually lives right around the corner from us, and I think it is a absolutely fantastic program. Um, the kids adore him. They also are practicing their reading skills while adoring him, which I think is fantastic. Um, and he is just a beautiful, beautiful dog, anyway. And like, the kids are just, they love it. I think it's a great program, honestly, all the way around. Um, and I would love for them to start doing that in nursing homes, actually. I know my, my, my grandmother, when she was in a nursing home, they used to, um, let us bring the dog in. And I think it's a fantastic, it's therapeutic, it relieves anxiety, it relieves stress, it relieves tension. Um, you know, we often forget sometimes that these kids do have anxiety and stress and tension, just like adults do, and I think he's a perfect remedy for that, absolutely.
I haven't met Benzie, but we do have a therapy dog that comes into our program. And I can tell you that all day today, my little guy that I work with kept saying, tomorrow Manny comes, tomorrow is Manny, it's Thursday, it's Manny Day. And they all look forward to their little 20-minute block to get to play with him, to get to talk with him. Um, and Manny's just a little chihuahua, and, but it's just a wonderful way to get, especially the kids that do suffer with anxiety and other mental health issues. Pet therapy is amazing, and I thoroughly support anything that, that brings furry creatures and children together.
I was just about to say that, too. Furry creatures.
Yeah.
And, or, or scaly ones, or, or slimy ones, toads, like anything that, that they, that brings them that peace of nature, I think, is very important.
I feel that's a benefit to students.
Oh, yes. I mean, even all the programs that I've been in, when you bring an animal into the, into the picture, it just, and you can do your education around that animal, and they don't even know they're learning.
That's true.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Animals are great. I'm glad they're used, they're doing that, and my daughter loved it. She, she's like, oh yay, birthday today!
What, are there other changes you'd want to see at all in, in the schools either?
Um, I'd like to see more development in our, our athletic program. Um, our athletic program has definitely suffered due to COVID. Um, as you may know, we don't have a boy soccer team this year, and we, but last year we didn't have one. We probably won't have one this year either. Um, A, because of players, and B, because I think, um, they had a hard time finding someone in time to coach for last, last season. Um, we did have a couple of, um, young men who played on the girls' soccer team, because when we don't have one, that's what the rule is, they're allowed to do that. And I, and I think honestly, it wasn't easy for them this year. They took a lot of heat and a lot of abuse, not from our own team, but from other teams for that. So I'd like to see some enhancements, um, with the athletic program, and largely because, as we've mentioned before, talking about budgets, we are not a very wealthy town. Um, and a lot of our students do rely on sporting scholarships and athletic scholarships to go to college. They look, um, for team placements, they're looking for, you know, money, a lot of the time, too, and I think we really need to focus on that. Um, and it was really brought to my attention. My daughter is involved with the Carver Youth Football Program, she's a cheerleader. Um, but, you know, just listening to the parents around town talk, I mean, I heard some things that kind of bothered me, like talking about pulling their athletes out of our school system and going and doing school choice in other school districts that have a better athletics program. Um, and that really upset me, because A, we want to provide those opportunities for our students here in our own district, obviously. Um, and B, the more students we learn, we lose to other districts, the, the, that money also goes away. We don't get as much funding either. So we want to make sure that, um, we're offering everything we possibly can to our student athletes, and I'd like to definitely see some enhancements in that area. I'd also like to see some enhancements in our special ed program. Um, we've talked a lot about the children that fall through the cracks. Um, and I was absolutely stunned this year. My daughter, as I mentioned, had a problem with math because we taught her the wrong way. And, um, right away, they picked up on that, and they put her in a program. And that basically, it was not after school or anything, it was during school, where they got her caught up to where they need to be. I would love to see more in programs like that. And, um, Jackie had mentioned before about grants and things like that, finding that money. We have an absolutely fantastic finance person for the school, um, and he does and goes above and beyond to try to find that money. And we found that money for the Title I program for the math, and I know that we can do that for many, many other programs.
Um, I agree with Kelly. I was so excited to read that we had finally hired a new football coach for the high school. Um, I know Carver has, sports has always been extremely important to the students in Carver, because, especially when we were young, that was all there was to do. And you, you were either playing sports, or you were getting in trouble. Um, and I think sports are so incredibly important to the development of a round, well-rounded child. Um, you learn so much teamwork and perseverance. All sorts of strong things come from sports. And, um, I, I think that when I found out about the boys having to play on the girls' team, I just thought, man, that's like, how, like, what if they're like amazing players and colleges won't even look at them for, for that? And, and we need our kids to have every opportunity, and that would mean scholarship money for playing sports. And if we can't give them that amazing sports background that Carver has a long history of, then we're failing them. Um, so definitely bringing our sports programs back to, to pre-COVID levels, and obviously, special ed is dear to my heart, and I love knowing that your daughter was able to get right back up there and that they're able to get grants, and Title I is amazing. So I, I, I wish I had something more original, but I absolutely agree with Kelly's statement.
I'm pretty much in the same place with them. Special ed, I, just, obviously, my top priority, um, making sure that the teachers are supported, the children are supported, the families are supported. Um, bullying, too, a comprehensive bullying program. Um, I've been told, and, and I've been talking to some parents, and, um, saying that there is a program out there, but it just needs to be better. Um, and so I have some ideas for that. Um, and then, uh, yeah, the sports, I've been reading about them and, and just seeing that it definitely needs to be, get, um, beefed up. But I think extracurricular in general, uh, not just sports, just in general have, um, being able to support anything, um, for not even just athletics, but other drama and all those types of programs as well. Just making sure that everyone, if you don't want to do a sport, then you don't have to do a sport, you can do something different. Um, and there's other team things like chess and all that kind of stuff.
Well, I think it might be time for closing statements.
Oh, okay. Um, thank you, um, and I thank you very much for Area 58 for hosting this, and Catherine for you, um, hosting the forum, I appreciate that. Acquiring a great education provides a foundation on which anyone can succeed, and I would like to help ensure that all of Carver's students succeed. I'm willing and able to continue serving on the school committee, and I will do so with integrity, fairness, and an open mind. And I would appreciate your vote on April 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, and thank you, Area 58. Um, I would be so excited and enthusiastic in this position to give everything I can back to my town and to the school system that I grew up, that made me who I am. Um, I just, I'm really excited for this opportunity. So you could vote for me on April 23rd, too.
Thank you, everyone, for having me, and I am very much excited and looking forward to hopefully serving, um, this community. And, uh, I'm just going to be focused and just be a leader and be an advocate for this town, and, um, for the teachers, for the parents, um, the community in general, and I'm very excited to, to be even, um, being able to do this, um, being here today is an honor.
Well, thank you to the three of you. Hope you felt like you had enough time to express your, your reasons for running for school committee.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.